It's 1800 hours, so I'll call the meeting to order, please. Thank you. We're going to start the evening with a land acknowledgement. And Council Hickey is going to read that this evening for us. Council Hickey, over to you.
Thanks very much, your worship. The land on which the city of St. John are menacested is situated as a traditional territory of the Woolishtewiak. The Woolishtewiak, along with their indigenous neighbors, the Mi'kmaq and the Pescatoumacadi, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to lands and resources.
We'll just pause for a few seconds and reflect on those words. I'll ask everyone to please stand for the National Anthem. City Clerk, next item, please.
Thank you, your worship. Next item is 2.1 on the agenda. Approval of the minutes of April the 29th.
April 29th, minutes. Councilor Hickey and Councilor Redwin on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is the approval of the agenda, and there are two additions from Committee of the Whole. The first would be 17.1, FCM Green Municipal Fund Agreement, and 17.2, Appointments to Committees.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda with the additions. Councilor Stewart and Councilor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is Item 4, Disclosures of Conflict of Interest, if we have any.
Councilor Sullivan.
5.3, your worship.
Thank you. Okay, next item, City Clerk.
Next is the Consent Agenda, and we would have to remove Item 5.3 to allow that to be voted on separately later on the agenda.
Senator Sullivan said he'll just leave for the...
Oh, okay.
He's going to step out, okay?
Perfect.
All right, so Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, your worship. So I would move 5.1 through to 5.7, please.
Second.
Secretary of Counselor Harris on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. I will highlight 5.2. There's going to be a 21-gun salute on May 18th, which is Loyalist Day. We only get one 21-gun salute per year in St. John. You have to apply for it, be up at Fort Howe. You definitely should take advantage of it. It's pretty impressive. They use blanks, just FYI, but it's still impressive. Next item, City Clerk.
Next item is Item 6, Members' Comments.
Okay, I'm going to kick this off with Members' Comments. I heard today that Mr. Arthur Irving had passed away, so I wanted to send condolences on behalf of council and the city to the Irving family. His legacy in St. John really is immeasurable. It'll be felt for generations to come. His vision, his leadership, and his unwavering commitment to St. John have left a permanent mark on our city's landscape, and he touched countless lives. And he continues to inspire generations. So I hope the family can find some comfort in memories and together. But I did went, I went through part of his, of the information that was released today, and I'll just highlight a couple of things because it is pretty impressive. At 70, he served 73 years as a service to the company. He became the president in 1972. The company was founded in 1924 by his father. He was born in 1930. IOL in, it was Irving Oil Limited, was named as one of Canada's Top 100 Employers in 2017. He employed about 2,500 local people and around 4,000 within the region, which would include the rest of the Atlantic provinces, Northeast U.S. and Quebec. He had companies in Ireland as well. He has an oil refinery refinery in Cove in Ireland. And a couple of the, of his accomplishments, in 1997, he was invested into the New Brunswick Business Hall of Fame. In 2002, he became an Officer of the Order of Canada. In 2003, he received the Doctors of Civil Laws from Acadia. 2008, he was inducted into the Canadian Business Hall of Fame. In 2010, he became Chancellor Emeritus of Acadia. In 2012, he received the Order of New Brunswick. In 2019, he received the Paul Harris Fellowship Award from the Rotary Club in St. John. And in 2021, he had an honorary doctorate in business admin from University of Moncton. So he was well-recognized for his work and his leadership and his vision and his drive. And he was a big, when I read through that, he was a big supporter of schools, Dartmouth College, Acadia, of course. And he offered scholarships in many universities, including U of T, and the local universities as well. So as I said to his family, we send our condolences. So I'll start off now with some of the councillors. Councilor Hickey, over to you.
Thanks very much, your worship. Appreciate your condolences and echo them as well. Few community events over the past couple of weeks. We had our South End Cleanup led by Pulse. I want to thank Mary and Lisa for organizing that. Also, the St. John Ale House celebrated 20 years in business, which is quite a milestone. So congratulations to Jesse Bergen and to Pete Stoddard as well for serving many of those years alongside each other. Also recognize, Councilor Ogden and I were in attendance at the Yom Hashoah Ceremony, which is a Holocaust Remembrance Day ceremony that was, that took place at the synagogue. It was a really moving ceremony and a very important one. I would recognize particularly timely as well, so appreciated the organization and the effort that went into that. It was good to attend. Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councilor Harris.
Thank you, your worship, just raising some awareness about a event coming up, the Night of Music for Alzheimer's. It's a fundraiser at the Five and Dime on May 23rd. Bit of a local community initiative that started a few years ago, and, and they're, please suggest a donation of $10 at the door. So Five and Dime is always a great venue, and they have a long list of really good local musicians that are going to be playing that night. So just put it on your calendar, 6:00 PM, May 23rd, at the Five and Dime.
Thank you, councillor. Councilor Redwin.
Thank you, Mayor. There's you, myself, and Councilor Killen, I guess, and Deputy actually showed up as well at the red dress day. It was, it's always interesting to learn more about the challenges that our Indigenous community have had, and it was a well-put-on event. I also wanted to mention, coming out tomorrow night, the Champlain Heights Association has their community meeting at 7:00 PM at Champlain Heights School. I encourage anybody to attend that lives in Champlain Heights. And the Chamber mixer is on Thursday, May 16th, from 4 until 6. And that's at the Crown Plaza, which is at 10 Portland Street. And Mayor, I guess you, with, with the other mayors this time, is going to have the State of the Region at the Trade and Convention Centre this year, May 22nd at 11:30, and tickets are being sold at the Chamber. So I look forward to seeing you and hearing great words from you and the other mayors. I think it's great that the region's coming together to do it this time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Deputy?
Thank you, your worship. I just want to send out a big thank you to the volunteers of One Change for this weekend's cleanup. They did a magnificent job over there, and we, we actually, after we finished cleaning up, we had a great barbecue that was put on by River Cross Mission. So thanks to all the volunteers and the people over there for cleaning up the Old North End. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Count. Thank you, Deputy. There's also, on the 16th of May, which is Thursday, there are the Heritage Awards at 4 o'clock, and there is also the Red Triangle Dinner that evening. So I'll mention those couple of things. I'm wearing my Moose Hide, and this is an Indigenous-led initiative that battles violence against women and children, girls. So it's, it's, it's a good thing, and this little hide will help you have that conversation about how do we end that violence against women and children. Indigenous women, of course, end up with more violence towards them than the average woman. They're killed at six times the rate that other women would be killed, and they also experience more spousal and domestic violence at about 2.5 times the rate. So it's something that we all need to be cognizant of, and we all need to figure out and understand how we can be part of the conversation and part of the cure for that. The only other couple of things I would, oh, I just wanted to mention, I want to say happy birthday to Lydia Margaret Reardon, who on May 14th, not allowed to say her age anymore, but she's my youngest of four and was born in 1991. So happy birthday, Lydia. Next item, City Clerk.
Thank you, your worship. Next on the agenda is Item 7.1, and it's for Retired Teachers' Day Proclamation.
Whereas teachers are the backbone of our education system, dedicating their lives to shaping the minds of our future generations, and whereas retired teachers have served with distinction and dedication throughout their careers, imparting knowledge, wisdom, and guidance to countless students, and whereas retired teachers continue to contribute to our communities through mentorship, volunteering, and advocacy for education, and whereas the experience, expertise, and passion of retired teachers is an invaluable asset to our society, and whereas it is fitting and proper to recognize and honor the contributions of retired teachers to the betterment of schools, our communities, and our nation, and whereas without the work of volunteerism of retired teachers within our community and province, many organizations and programs could not function. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donan O'Dreaden of St. John, in recognition of their continued contributions, after years of serving in the public as educators and volunteers in the school system and society, do hereby declare Tuesday, May 14th, 2024, as Retired Teachers' Day in the city of St. John. And I will just mention, we have a couple of teachers here. We have a retired teacher, Councilor Ogden, and we have a current teacher, Councilor Sullivan, and we have Councilor Norton on the line, who's also a teacher. So thank you for your services. Next item, City Clerk.
Next is another proclamation, Item 7.2, and this is Moose Hide Campaign Day Proclamation.
Nice watch here. So whereas the Moose Hide Campaign is an Indigenous-led grassroots movement of men, boys, and all Canadians standing up to end violence against women, children, and all those along the gender continuum, and whereas the Moose Hide Campaign was founded along the Highway of Tears in British Columbia in response to the injustices and violence faced by many women and children in Canada, particularly those who are Indigenous, and whereas intimate partner violence is at an epidemic proportion across Canada, with more than 4 in 10 women having experienced it in their lifetimes, and this reality is worse for Indigenous women who are twice as likely to experience violence from their current or former partners, and whereas the Moose Hide Campaign has distributed over 5 million Moose Hide pins that each spark five conversations about issues of violence against women, children, and all those along the gender continuum, and whereas wearing the Moose Hide pin demonstrates a commitment to honor, respect, and protect the women and children in your life, end gender-based violence, and take meaningful action towards reconciliation with Indigenous peoples, and whereas participation in the Moose Hide Campaign is a concrete action for all citizens to address the legacies of colonization, residential schools, and the reality of more than 1,200 missing or murdered women in Canada, and whereas engagement with the Moose Hide Campaign aligns with the United Nations Declaration on the Right of Indigenous People, the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's call to action, and the calls for, for justice of the National Inquiry into missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donan O'Dreaden of St. John, do hereby declare Thursday, May 16th, 2024, as Moose Hide Campaign Day in the city of St. John. Okay, next item, City Clerk.
Next is another proclamation, Item 7.3, and it's for National Public Works Week.
Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and, to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of St. John, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public workers professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in St. John to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Now therefore, I, Mayor Donan O'Dreaden of St. John, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to 25th of 2024 as National Public Works Week in the city of St. John. And the city will also be issuing some more information about that because we have a lot of public works employees, and as we all love to say, we don't miss the water till the well runs dry. And it's like anything else, if you have a break in your sewer line or whatever, that's when you start to think about all of these things. So to those workers, they have an important job, and they're always behind the scenes, but it's, it keeps the whole city rolling and everything moving smoothly if all of your infrastructure is working well, and you need your professionals to do that. So next item, City Clerk.
Well, next are public hearings, but it's not quite 6:30 yet, so we will move ahead in the agenda. I would suggest we go to Item 12.1, an update by the Chief Administrative Officer on catalytic projects.
Over to you, CAO.
Thank you, your worship, for an update to council this evening. I'll give an update on three catalytic infrastructure projects and one of the advocacy projects. For the innovative Central Peninsula Learning Commons, the province, Anglophone South School District, and the city are continuing planning work on the new South End School located adjacent to Rainbow Park, and the new North End School located to Rope Rock Road adjacent to the YMCA. Funding has now been confirmed for the construction of the hubs for both the South End School and the North End School, and the province has informed the city that some site preparation for the South End School, including demolition of houses on St. James Street, will proceed in the spring and summer. And to accommodate the North End Hub, the province has announced the North End School will be open in the fall of 2027. The city can also confirm the Turner Brewer Memorial will remain in Rainbow Park at an alternative alternate location in the park, and the city is in active discussions with the school board regarding shared use of Rainbow Park. The city will begin consultation with the public for the placement of the memorial and the design upgrades to Rainbow Park later this spring. On another project, the redevelopment of the Fundy Key, the developer is pushing ahead with construction for the first building and working with the city on the timing to access Harbor Passage Extension around the site. On the gathering place, the Idoli Makahomic, the opening of the patios is still in track for the first week of June, and interior work is happening now for some coat upgrades as a result of the new patio space. The plaza should be substantially complete by the end of June. Concrete slab for the Rockpool Foundation has been installed, and concrete unit paper installation continues. Title steps are complete. Work continues at the entrance to Market Square Building near the Ale House, and work continues on the promenade, which completes the Harbor Passage Trail to the Hilton. The final project I have an update for you on is on the industrial parks, investment in cities' industrial parks, and I can inform council that documents have been filed. An industrial parks company now exists. The board will be populated, and the city staff have engaged with the province and the Regional Development Corporation, in particular, to look at opportunities to open up land for investment for industrial park opportunities. And switching now to the catalytic advocacy projects on affordable housing and homelessness file. As an update, the St. John Hub is moving and will be reopening in mid-May, should be this week or next. The Hub Center will act as a central, central location for a variety of services, including prevention and diversion services, housing, family reunification, food and supplies, food and supply security, primary healthcare, and social assistance additions in mental health, removal barriers, et cetera. The Hub Center will potentially be used in, in extreme weather situation as well to help the, to assist the homeless population, such as heavy rains or hurricanes, and the unhoused population will be encouraged to use the Hub Services in the community. And outreach teams are continuing to work with those in encampments to access services. Final note is on the Out of the Cold Shelter is now closed as of April 30th. We can confirm the, from the province, that there will be no loss in services for the unhoused citizens in St. John. Permanent shelters at the Oflow Ministry and Coverdale for Women will keep additional beds they increase for the winter to ensure there are available options, and the team is actively working on locations for those without alternatives to shelter. And the Out of the Cold Shelter will also be housed in the same location next year, come the 1st of November 2024 until April 2025. With that, your worship, that concludes my brief儿public update.
Okay, Councilor Redwin, you had a question?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I was just wondering, Acting CAO, Fogan, just wondering if you have any idea what the hours of operation are going to be for the hub? Has the city been told?
I, I don't have that information here. I don't know if Commissioner...
It's, it's okay. I mean, we can check back later.
I think, when we met, it's, yeah, it's, no, it's, I think it's like from 8:00 AM until 2:00 AM is what they had talked about, I think, when we were at the meeting.
Through your worship, I believe you're right.
Yeah.
It was 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So most, yeah. Counselor Hickey?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I'd just say about the homeless hub and strategies we're in, we're going to experience more tents in public. We've just, with, 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 without that permanent shelter, without permanent solutions to this, the city's left to pick up the pieces and input and put in subpar policy. It's, any action the city's taken to address this crisis is not what it should be, and that's not on the city. We do not, we still do not have the long-term solutions to be able to actually deal with this crisis. As a result, we see, we all see the impact it's having in our communities, and as we get into summer, we're already seeing it. It's going to get way worse, and it's going to continue to get worse, hopefully until we have some kind of real solution moving forward. Anyway, but appreciate the update, though, CAO.
Counselor Harris?
Thank you, your worship. I just, I think, I think it's a good point that Council Hickey brings up here, and not, I know I don't want to derail this, this municipal update here by any stretch of the imagination, but while we have a few minutes before public hearing, it just occurs to me that the city is rolling out a fairly extensive housing affordability fund, you know, list of initiatives worth millions of dollars, and we know there's incentives in there, we know there's updating of our one-stop development shop to help expedite development and build, build things faster. We, I get that. I do think it's something for staff to consider and flag at this time, where we know we're not going to see anything transformative, at least for one more year, or to change the current status. And the last year, we had a call to action for staff around the homelessness issue. The year before, we got to a place where it still felt like we were behind the eight ball. There's an opportunity, and I was with a group today of Coverdale, from the university, for the city to play a helpful role and leading role in capacity building and bridge funding. Most of the pots of money that are out there for nonprofits, and there are many nonprofits that would love to get into the, get into the place of being able to offer community housing, can't access it because they don't have the bridge funding. So we know that the province has money, we know the federal government has money, and I think there's just a point here where our staff, and I think us as a council, can be aware that we can play a role in helping nonprofits build that high acuity, you know, community housing level development that currently nobody has really a way to do. So it's, it's something, I know we can't, we can't resolve right now, your worship, but I would love it if, if staff could flag that and maybe in the future, in the near future, make a presentation about how to tie into some of these existing funding streams to create more community housing. Anyway.
Appreciate that, councillor. All right, so we have, you've had your updates, so I'll take a motion to receive for information. And Deputy Councilor Hickey on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? 26, 1826. Next item, City Clerk.
Next would be, I would recommend we do 13.1. It's an update from the Growth Committee, North End Neighborhood Plan Advisory Committee Terms of Reference.
Okay, Deputy, over to you for the intro.
Thank you, your worship. Your worship, the Growth Committee is pleased to recommend to council that the city adopt the Terms of Reference for the North End Neighborhood Plan Advisory Committee. The approval of the Terms of Reference is another critical step in the development of the North End Plan and will allow staff to launch a recruitment campaign to attract diverse community members to participate in this crucial project. Growth Committee was supportive of the Terms of Reference and the focus on establishing a diverse advisory committee that represents those who live, work, and volunteer within the North End boundary. The development of the North End Neighborhood Plan is one of the key action items of the city's Housing Accelerating Fund project, and we are looking forward to seeing this plan developed. Community Planning Manager Jennifer Kirchner is available if there are any questions for staff, and I am pleased to move this recommendation.
Okay, sounds good. I'll take a secondary on it. Counselor Hickey, question for you, Counselor Hickey?
Yes, your worship, and just in the essence of having three minutes, I figured I'd toss in my two cents to say, I had the opportunity to be on the South End Neighborhood Plan Advisory Committee, and this is a really important step of, of these plans, putting that team together that really is a reflection of what the neighborhood looks like, is really important, and certainly we saw the power that, and you were in it as well, the power that the South End Neighborhood Team was able to put together, and we're seeing that in action now that the plan is being worked, we're seeing the value of it, and I'm excited to see that go ahead to the North End as well. I think it's really good.
I'm excited to see it as well. I think that, you know, once you get a strategy in place, then things start happening, and people understand the strategy, so it's good. So we have a mover and a secondary on that, so I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Excellent. 28, next item.
We could do, the Committee of the Whole items that came out should be relatively quick, so the first one would be 17.1, FCM Green Municipal Fund Grant Agreement, and the resolution is that the city, the city of St. John enter into a Green Municipal Fund Grant Agreement with Feder, with the Federation of Canadian Municipalities for the North End Sustainable Neighborhood Action Plan, generally in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting in May 13th, 2024, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said agreement and any documents ancillary thereto.
Yeah, I'll take a mover on that. Counselor, okay, Counselor Harris on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Next item.
And the next one is 17.2. It's recommended appointments to committees, and the recommendations are for TD Station to reappoint Patricia Ellsworth for three-year terms effective July 27th, and to appoint Maude Suhal for three years, effective July 27th. Cana Games Aquatic Center to appoint David Connell and Peter Murray, each for three-year terms, effective July 27th. St. John Community Arts Board to reappoint Andrea Kikuchi for three-year terms starting July 27th. To appoint Lindsay Jackard for three years, effective July 27th. And to appoint Fujian Zhao and Brian Robinson, each for three-year term, effective May 14th. Shared Risk Pension Plan to appoint Samuel Tete as the alternate trustee for three-year term, effective July 27th. Fort Latour Development Authority, notwithstanding Council's policy adopted on October 29th, 2012, regarding appointments to ABCs. Beth Kelly Hat be reappointed for one-year term, effective May 14th. And to appoint Brooke Cheeks for three years, effective July 27th. And for Pro Kids, to appoint Larry Harlow for three-year term, effective... And for Pro Kids to appoint Larry Harlow for three-year term, effective May 14th, and to appoint Amanda Downey for three-year term, effective July 27th. St. John Transit Commission to reappoint Neville Crab for three years, effective July 27th. St. John Energy to reappoint Neil Jacobson for three years, effective July 27th, and St. John Board of Police Commissioners, notwithstanding council's policy adopted on October 29th, 2012 regarding ABCs, that Michael Costello will be reappointed for one-year term, effective July 31st.
Okay, so I've got the deputy moving that. Counselor Bow on the second on the question? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? All right, next item, City Clerk?
So next we'd be back to the public hearings, which were scheduled, advertised for 6:30, and the first item in the public hearings is item nine point one, and it's a municipal and rezoning, municipal plan and rezoning bylaw amendments with staff presentation and planning advisory committee report for 241 to 281 Douglas Avenue.
Thank you. Commissioner Pothenroth, over to you for the intro.
Thank you. Good evening, your worship and members of council. Before you this evening for a public hearing is an application for a municipal plan amendment and rezoning that was submitted by Diamond Schmidt for the property located at 241 to 281 Douglas Avenue. The municipal plan and to rezone the properties to permit the expansion of the New Brunswick Museum. The application has been evaluated by staff and the planning advisory committee, and included in your package is the recommendation to amend the municipal plan and to rezone the property. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer Kirchner, the manager of community planning, for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Pothenroth, your may, your worship, members of council. I am pleased to be before you this evening to present the municipal plan amendment and rezoning for what is known as the New Brunswick Museum Project. The New Brunswick Museum is located on Douglas Avenue at the intersection with Bentley Street. Constructed in 1934, the existing museum structure has served as a landmark for over ninety years. Countless redevelopment proposals have been assessed in the last several decades, bringing us to what we have before you today. Today's application does involve a municipal plan amendment and rezoning in order to facilitate the expansion of the proposed museum. So we do have included is one of the renderings featuring the original museum and the proposed The proposal includes the retaining of the original 1934 structure, and that will serve as a focal point for the redevelopment of the site. Also to be retained is the facade of the King George Hall, which is located just to the rear of the original building and is viewable from River View Memorial Park. The more recent additions that have occurred over the decades will be removed in order to facilitate the new addition. Included in this will be a prominent accessible entrance, which will be a huge benefit for the community. The site plan and included elevation drawings indicate that the proposed addition will be of a similar height as the original 1934 structure, and will also align with the established front yard setback of the original building. The building design is contemporary in nature. It is important to note that museum designs really require some special characteristics in order to ensure that materials being preserved or put on display are protected from, for instance, sunlight. So you will notice in the design that there is some significant light penetration being provided between the addition and the original structure, and other areas of the building will have significantly limited natural light. So we do have on here the elevation drawings from all four sides of the structure. The site is located on Douglas Avenue, which is one of our character corridors within the city. It also is one of the city's heritage conservation areas. The proposed development involves a redevelopment of several parcels of land, which are being acquired as part of the project. Six additional parcels along Douglas Avenue would form part of the development site. This includes four residential buildings, which are shown in the two bottom images, as well as a vacant residential parcel and a lot containing the city's sanitary lift station. Lift station itself serves four residential structures, and a recent approval granted by common council will facilitate the sale and eventual decommissioning of that lift station and removal of sanitary services from these properties. The museum property itself is identified in our municipal plan as a major community facility, so this is something that serves the public on a regional or, in this case, provincial scale. The land use designation really is what we see on most major institutions and significant facilities falling under. This includes things such as hospitals, cultural establishments, recreational complexes as well. In order to facilitate this proposed project, there is a number of amendments that are required. Basically, if you can see on the image, there is land that is park and natural area, as well as stable residential, and they will need to be amended to reflect a major community facility. There is also a very small portion of River View Memorial Park that is highlighted. This is a historic encroachment of a portion of the museum building that is essentially encroached since it was built in 1934. This is just a way to help ensure that the entire museum site is under one municipal plan zone designation and one zone in our bylaw. For simplicity's sake, this is approximately about five meters around the, the building The existing museum is also zoned a major community facility, and as part of the expansion, we would see properties currently zoned mid-rise residential and park rezoned to CFM, and this also includes that encroachment that was mentioned. The CFM zone will be able to facilitate everything that's proposed as part of the project. Staff have undertaken an initial assessment of the proposal, and the project generally aligns with all the standards in our zoning bylaw, including setbacks, building height, and general design guidance. The report does indicate that a development officer variance will be required to allow the placement of parking within the required side yard setback and as well to facilitate a reduction in the parking requirements. As part of this project, there has been negotiations between staff and representatives for the museum to finalize the public benefits and section 59 conditions for the project. This is beyond the public benefit of having financial reinvestment into this institution, which is located in St. John. So some of the public benefits that are being considered include the designation of the 1934 museum and the facade of King George Hall as a heritage property upon completion of the project, a cost-sharing agreement to upgrade the Douglas Avenue Bentley Street crosswalks and delighted crosswalks, installation of two covered transit stops south of 277 Douglas Avenue, the extension of Harbor Passage, and the establishment of the New Brunswick Museum parking lot as a snowband lot for use by local residents. We are proposing a few minor section 59 conditions, which is that the development and use of the parcel be in general conformance with the detailed building elevations and site plans, and that the New Brunswick Museum provide off-site parking and shuttle service for all staff at an off-site location. Notice was sent to all property owners within 100 meters, and two submissions have been received and included in your package. Notice was also posted on our website, and I will note that the applicant undertook extensive engagement sessions across the province, and copies of those are included in the package. Staff and PAC are aligned in the recommendation, which is to undertake the required amendment to the municipal plan, the rezoning, the imposition of section 59 conditions, and the creation of a section 131 agreement to formalize the five proposed public benefits. That is everything.
Thank you very much. All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing now, and I will ask if there's anyone here this evening who would like to speak against the project. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the project on Douglas Avenue. And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the project. City Clerk, I don't believe we had anyone registered for virtual this evening?
No, we did not, your worship.
Thank you. So I will ask now if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the project? If you want to come forward. Give us your name and your involvement with the museum, please.
Good evening, your worship and city councilors. My name is Tracy Clinch, and I'm the Chair of the Board of the New Brunswick Museum. We're here today to present our application for municipal plan amendment and rezoning to facilitate the expansion of the museum into adjacent lands. The New Brunswick Museum is a cornerstone cultural institution in St. John and all of New Brunswick. Founded in 1842, we are the oldest continuing museum in Canada, and for generations, we have served the community by preserving and showcasing the rich natural and cultural heritage of our province. The Revitalize NBM project will allow us to create a modern vibrant museum that will be a destination for residents and visitors alike. It will, it will provide much-needed space for new exhibits, educational programs, and research facilities. We have worked close with the city and the public throughout this process. The proposed expansion aligns with the city's long-term vision for Douglas Avenue, and the surrounding area will bring significant public benefits, including improved pedestrian infrastructure and expanded public transit options. We believe in open communication and transparency, and we're committed to being good neighbors, providing regular updates to the neighborhood throughout this process. This project will not only revitalize a historic building, but create jobs and boost tourism, providing a significant benefit to the entire community. We look forward to answering any questions that might, or concerns that you might have. At this time, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce Michael Leckman, who has come today to guide you through the changes and some of the renderings of the museum. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tracy. Mike, I'll get you to give us your name once more, and then the, what your association with the project is?
My name is Michael Leckman. I'm the principal of Diamond Schmidt Architects. I'm representing the entire design team tonight, and it's an honor to be here, your worship and members of council.
Thank you. It's great to have you here, finally.
Oh, I'm trying to find which slideshow is mine. Oh, maybe it's that one now. Let's try that one.
I guess the title makes sense.
Yeah, let's try that. Here we go. There now? Okay, very good. The design for the revitalized New Brunswick Museum builds upon the wisdom of the original site selection on Douglas Avenue, a site with great significance, geological and natural history significance, cultural and historical significance, urban and neighborhood significance. It's our intention that the design will be an instrument through which to meaningfully and joyfully experience all those qualities. This aerial view from the east, you can see our intent. We maintain the scale of the historic building, create an accessible hall between the original historic 1934 building and the new wings. We connect east to west with carefully calibrated glass walls and make it possible to enjoy distant views and possibly the northern lights from time to time on a rooftop terrace. In this view, from Douglas Avenue, we've created an open and accessible entrance, maintaining an important existing tree. We've created a plaza with a storytelling circle and bus drop-off, and made the gift shop strongly visible from the street. Everyone in this room is aware St. John is the home to Canada's oldest continuing museum, and that revitalization being proposed is an important next step in its history, important to New Brunswickers all across the province, to the national and international research communities, and to citizens and families of St. John. The museum, together with Duke Creative and the consulting team, organized a province-wide consultation over five days in eight locations, where we canvassed opinions about what would make the museum important to other New Brunswickers. In addition, we consulted with indigenous groups in Moncton and St. Stevens, and in every case, we set up sixteen easels with printed panels, made slideshow presentations, and learned that the revitalized museum had to be inspiring, offer activities for all ages, had to engage with the history and culture of the remarkable site, and most notably include views from the rooftop. What follows are a few technical drawings. Here's our site plan, with Marble Cove at the top, St. John Harbor at the bottom, and the museum on Douglas Avenue in the center. It's a remarkable ridge on which this site, this building is located. The museum is at the top of Bentley Street, at the terminus of Harbor's Passage, Harbor Passage, a well-defined route from uptown to Douglas Avenue. We hope that the passage, we expect that the passage will extend to the south and to the Reversing Falls and form a continuous accessible route. The windows of the great hall and community room are located to frame views to uptown and to Marble Cove, represented in this diagram. Smaller windows between the new wings frame views and give an opportunity to pause when you're visiting the displays. The urban edge, the east edge of the new wings, has been designed using the scale of the historic particle and the homes further north to modulate its size. On the natural edge, on the west side of the escarpment, the wings of the museum are scalloped and wave-like and respond strongly to west light. The second floor and the roof are designed with mass timber, recognizing the role timber has played in the history of St. John from shipbuilding to pulp and paper, but also to reduce the embodied carbon forming part of our sustainability narrative. Let's take a virtual tour now of the building with a series of renderings. Here's the front entrance on Douglas Avenue, to the left, the historic building, in the center, the accessible entrance, to the right, the boutique, and above, you can see an event already taking place on the roof. This is our west facade. The scalloped shapes of our west facade above the forested escarpment will create a dramatic play of light throughout the day while reflecting the inner workings of the museum, galleries above, loggia at street level, and a great hall, a great hall unifying old and new. This is your moment of arrival in the museum. Tickets are on the right. Beyond it is the stair to the second floor. Straight ahead is a terrace overlooking Marble Cove. To the left is a café. Next is a, is a window into a simulated dig pit for training and education, then closer on your left, a top-lit hall. Openings in the ceiling connect you to activities on the second floor. To gain access to the historic stair and the special events gallery on the second floor, we've created this skylit hall. The hall also provides access to the collections area for public viewing. Of course, it is important, it is an important opportunity for a dramatic skeleton to be Access from the lobby through a door on the top right that you can see is a multipurpose auditorium with seating for over 100, and by retracting the seats, the space is convertible to an event space with banquet tables. Located on the main floor of the historic building- "Located on the main floor of the historic building is the Archives Reading Room, accessible to the general public, but of course also to researchers." "We're on the second floor now, and here you have access to 30,000 square feet of exhibition space as well as views of Marble Cove and uptown. To the right, you can see the continuation of the stair up to the roof terrace. And from this level, you would have close-up views to that special display in the skylit hall." "To make it possible for the widest variety of displays and exhibits, we've engineered a column-free, well-serviced, 12-meter-wide and 30-meter-long series of long gallery spaces. We hope you never see it empty like this." "It can be windy on Douglas Avenue. To make the roof terrace more enjoyable, we've planned two-meter-high wind screens. You'll be able to enjoy a coffee, the dramatic long views to uptown and Marble Cove and the Reversing Falls, or a special event in this sheltered space." "We know that many special events conclude with a photo on the steps of the museum. We now hope that they will have started in the new great hall, the auditorium, or on the roof." "So now you know the project a little bit better, and let's look a little closer at the site plan, starting with Riverview Memorial Park on the left. You can see the Harbor Passage indicated going further south, the historic stairs, the new main entrance next to that, the special tree, the bus drop-off, the parking area, the roof terrace, and the terrace overlooking Marble Cove." "So to wrap up now, a reprise of that aerial view. And for those of you who can't see, there's a wood model just over my shoulders in front of me and council. This is a view from the east, and here is a view illuminated from the west. And finally, a view from the west on Marble Cove over the course of the day." "Thank you very much for the opportunity to present the project."
All right, well, that's pretty impressive. Hold on there, I'm gonna see if anyone, we do have a few questions for you. Okay, first up is Counselor Ogden.
I want to thank you because we're probably the only city in Canada, maybe Vancouver, one of the few in the world that sits on a massive river system, the largest east of the Mississippi, the Woolstoke-St. John River System, and on the Atlantic Ocean. And so when you go to that rooftop, I just lived down the street from it, you'll be able to see things that you can't see in any other city. No other Atlantic city has a connection to both the waterways inland and the ocean. One of the things I hope you do is to promote our marine history, which is, Halifax has the Atlantic Museum of the, the Museum of the Atlantic, which was supposed to come to St. John, but it was dropped because of, I don't know, old think or something, St. Johners dropped the ball on that one. But this allows us to maybe show that history because we were the third biggest in the world. We're not always good at patting ourselves on the back. We often think that everybody from away is more important than we are. So I hope you can do that, and I also hope that you reach out. The Loyalist House, which I raised $600,000 for a few years ago to refurbish, receives no government funding, none. And it's a travesty because King's Landing, Acadian Village received huge amounts of government funding, and most of the dollars are generated in St. John, yet Loyalist House was left out. They do well to get a can of paint from the province of New Brunswick. So I hope that your museum will reach out to people who have been active in the community promoting our history and not to forget who we are as St. Johners. I know it's the New Brunswick Museum, but we have a tremendous amount of history here. So I hope that you do all those things in your programming. I think you picked the perfect site selection. And I hope that you display our, our history too. And I know, you know, we get trendy in fads with history and everybody else gets dropped. And I hope that doesn't happen in this case. I know, I see Mr. Suddy there and we worked on an archaeological dig one day together and I was absolutely amazed at the levels of, of history that exist here. So I like to see all of our history so that people don't get upset that they've been left out. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hickey, sorry, over to you, you're next.
Thanks very much, Your Worship. Thanks very much for sharing the designs. I know I'm incredibly excited for it, how thoughtful, how intentional the design is, is, I think it's going to be a really inspiring addition to the community, and I'm very excited to see it. Maybe, not a question for you, maybe a question for Tracy. Is the intention for this facility to hold the entire collection of the New Brunswick Museum?
I could, I could.
Whoever can best, I just wasn't sure.
Go ahead. A couple of things. The staff at there, I have to take a moment to recognize the staff of the museum because they've spent the last long period of time packing everything up and moving it over to Lancaster. It will be the first time, and Brent can correct me if I'm wrong, it'll be the first time at the new New Brunswick Museum that the collection of the province will be under one roof since 1968? 1968, so yes.
So the intention is to leave Lancaster Avenue and have everything under this roof?
So we will have exhibits at Lancaster Avenue, and they will be able to move in and out of the museum. Do you want to speak just a little more? Brent knows the inside and inside-out of the museum and the exhibits.
Counselor Hickey, Brent Suddy, I'm the COO and Director of Research with the museum. So Lancaster was initially intended to be an interim space where we could move everything into. Working with Department of Transportation, they did such a fabulous job at it that really, it has become kind of our hub where we're doing a lot of the work to support community museums, also to, to Counselor Ogden's point, to basically reach out and support some of those community institutions. And the intent actually is to, to maintain that space so that the public face where everybody would come to see the exhibits will be at Douglas Avenue, but a lot of the behind-the-scenes work will happen at Lancaster, which is only four minutes' drive away, and also that matches what a lot of other major institutions do. A lot of the things that we do, like necropsies on, you know, animals, those kind of things, will likely happen at that. And that also allows us to really control the climate a lot better in the new facility at Douglas as well.
Okay, great, thank you. And saying everything goes well here tonight, which I would imagine it does, when, when do you start?
So we'll be breaking ground within the next few months. We're lining up a campaign, a capital campaign right now for the fundraising portion that the museum is on the hook for. So we'll be doing that over the next few weeks, and then groundbreaking will happen within the next few months.
That's great.
If all goes well.
Excellent. Counselor Harris, over to you.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm gonna say, you know, echo everything I've just heard about the congratulations and the certain appreciation that you're, and the attention to detail you're bringing here to this. I guess it's still tough to me in many ways to have the museum in this place. A lot of museums you go to, they integrate a much broader piece of the business community. So when we think about our uptown museum when it was here, it has with it a lot of points of interest, walkability, and this is a location that my concern is, is a, it's, a lot more driving is done and needed to get here. I get that there's the Harbor Passage connection you can walk over there. So my hope is, is that we push that type of communication and we push that type of integration for people who would be looking at this, how to get here and all that, and I get the transit piece. But Douglas Avenue right now is really treated by many residents as a throughway. When you get off that Reversing Falls Bridge, it's a place where people drive quite fast. There's lots of requests for traffic coming here. And I'm looking over at your design team here and I'm saying, what level of consideration was there and has there been any asks to DTI or to the city around that traffic integration piece? We're going to increase traffic here. There's a high school here. Friends of mine, kids who walk across Reversing Falls to get to the bridge don't have a crosswalk. But John's guys down the hill on Chesley Drive do have a crosswalk so they can get over to Ocean Steel. It's a big problem, and I'm worried about it. And I don't know what part you may play in it or what partnership we can count on. Because it's stuff that the cities ask for from the province for a very long time, and quite frankly, just hasn't been acted on. So I assume it must be, you must be curious about it, and you must be thinking about it. And I'm just wondering what that interaction has been like with the province.
Yeah, there was an extensive study done on traffic and parking for the museum. With regard to the site, I'll start with that. With regard to the site, there were many proposed locations that were looked at for the site. All, an extensive study against all of those sites was done. And there were, for various reasons, including the fact that the museum, the, the original museum location on Douglas Avenue was there. But all of, each of the other sites had some limitations that Douglas Avenue didn't have in terms of space, in terms of water, table levels, things like that. So Douglas Avenue was chosen by, was the outcome of the study and the architects and the input of a number of different groups of people. So that, that study was done and Douglas Avenue came out on top. With regard to traffic, there was a traffic study that was done and a parking study was done. There will be some additions to help try to control some of the pedestrian traffic in the area, and we will continue to consult with city and province and residents in order to ensure that we minimize the impact of increased traffic in the area.
So, but I, 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 thank you. I get what you're saying. It doesn't answer my question on that last part. What is the province saying about that throughway and their involvement on the Reversing Falls and their obligation to provide safe access for pedestrians? You know, I'm a counselor at large here, and we have ward counselors all over the place. There is an intersection here. And if I'm a resident in the Lower West Side, the only way I have to get here is through this Harbor Passage's expansion. But I don't have a safe way to get across the road, which is deemed a public highway for the province. And I know it's not your field, but I guess, back to the original question, are you talking to DTI about this point of concern? Where you're going to get Reversing Falls tourists who maybe want to walk to the museum because it's nearby and they can park there, and there's going to be a new, like, I'm just thinking about the broader interaction and the integration because I know our team and our traffic engineers have been talking about this, haven't seen any action. I think we need a partnership on that to get it done.
So to answer your question directly, we have been talking about it. There has been a study done. We plan on making sure that we minimize the impact, but no decisions have been made around anything other than what I've told you so far. But those conversations continue.
Okay. And I think that there will be a time when this is done for us to ask staff some questions as well, Counselor, so maybe that's a question for staff. Counselor Redwan, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, through to Tracy. Thank you for your presentation too. It was really good. I just, I wanted a little bit of clarification. If this were to pass and it gets rezoned and everything is approved, is it four or six homes that would later get demolished?
So six structures, four homes.
Okay, okay, that makes sense, I think. Okay.
Six properties.
Six properties, there's five structures, but four of them are actually homes.
Yeah, okay, that's right. Okay, perfect. And I sit on the Heritage Board and I had a whole slew of questions. I don't think you were there for that, but
I was not.
One of my questions was, is if the heritage property is going to get demolished, is there any room for using architectural salvage? There's probably tons of homes that could use some of the outside fixtures, inside fixtures.
I'm gonna have Brent to answer that, actually.
That would be great.
That's a very good, very good question. So obviously, being in the business of heritage, we were very concerned about that as well. So we've made a commitment that the entire, all of the structures are actually going to be fully documented, so they'll be 3D-scanned on the inside and out, and also walkthroughs to try to identify any of those things that actually are, you know, are important components that could be used elsewhere or incorporated into the museum as well. So that work will probably happen in the next couple of weeks for that. But there also will be a, a physical, or a virtual record of those buildings before there's any alteration to them as well, so.
Do we know how many people live in these homes currently, or?
Well, currently, there's only one home that's occupied. And I believe it's a single-family home. The rest are actually vacant at the moment.
Okay, all right, that's great. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy, over to you.
Thank you, Worship. Tracy, Michael, you guys have done a magnificent job on this. This is a really, really, really nice project, and I'm happy to see it. I'm hoping, because Counselor Harris is quite right, you know, we've had many complaints about Douglas Avenue speeding and high-traffic volume. But, and I know that we are going to, I mean, we, in the past, we redirected the traffic so that they had to go down instead of turning on off the bridge onto Douglas Avenue. And we are going to be putting in some temporary bumps there to see how that works. So, but I'm hoping this is going to be a catalyst to help us solve the problem permanently. So this will be one of the spinoffs, I'm hoping. To Counselor Ogden's point, which I think was a good one, the riverside of the building, is there observation decks and places where you can sit and look at the water and, you know, as the trails down to the water and that sort of thing?
That's right. So the trails and everything that are there are not, are going to not be disturbed. And as, and maybe, Michael, you want to talk to this a little bit, but there is a rooftop café with views in both directions. So you'll be able to see Marble Cove from the back and the harbor from the front. So it's, it's going to be quite magnificent from the top, the rooftop patio.
Okay, so I guess I should have pointed it more towards, are you going to be able to access those trails?
Yes.
From the, okay, from the museum, yeah. Okay, well, that's great. I think it's a wonderful project. Thank you for coming here.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just gonna check and see if Counselor Norton, are you on? Okay. And you have a question, Counselor? Over to you.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Your Worship. Just a big, no real questions, but certainly congratulations to the entire New Brunswick Museum team. I know there's, there's many, many people that have brought this together, but I can't help but think about the Grand Hall. Just a quick commentary, the Grand Hall at the Canadian Museum of History. And I know in the renderings it pictures something like that. So I, I look forward to that time where the New Brunswick Museum is hosting many more galas and many more events than we currently do for some of those top-shelf events that maybe other cities or other facilities have had. So it's not to say move over a Canadian Museum of History, but we've got a, we've certainly got a close second and the inspiration that's, that's coming from that and what can take place in, in our Grand Hall is going to be exciting. And I, I didn't know about Lancaster. I understood that Lancaster was going to be vacated, but it seems to me like that's, that's just an extra piece of good news that the team has brought this evening. So I'm happy that that's gone west and an underutilized and vacant building has been adapted to, to host, to host an important annex to the New Brunswick Museum and some of the important work that you do that will get carried over to Douglas Avenue. So just thank you, congratulations. And everything I'm hearing tonight is just, is being received so well. So looking forward to seeing this move on to the next stage. So thank you, Your Worship, for the time to, to pipe in there.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, Tracy, that looks like that's it for you so far. I will note that CBCL did the parking study and EXP did the traffic study, and I've got Melissa Wigfield from EXP here tonight. So that's all in the kit. If anybody out there would like to read it, it's all interesting. It's about, I don't know, it's like 170 pages, this one item. Okay, so I'll ask again for the second time if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the project. And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the project. So now I'll close the public hearing and I'll ask my team of counselors if anyone has any questions for staff. Counselor Harris. Oh, sorry, Counselor Hickey's up first.
Thank you. Both quick on the draw there. I'll just repeat my question to staff, and I know, Mike, I don't, I don't see Tim here tonight, so no, you don't have the advantages of Tim, and that's okay. It's a pretty simple question. We know there's something that needs to be done that has to include the province. Do we have any sort of commitment from them for improvement around the intersection of Reversing Falls and the interaction of traffic off of their And the interaction of traffic off of their highway? Whatever number that is, I'm forgetting. Which is designated provincial highway that goes through our city? And Douglas Avenue? Do we have anything from them by way of commitment? Do we have any timelines on a decision? Or anything that we know of that they're looking at to do differently?
Commissioner Huguenholz, over to you.
Good evening, through you to the councillor. You'll be pleased to know that we do have plans this year. There will be a crosswalk installed on the east side of Chesley Drive at Reversing Falls Bridge. There is also some traffic calming planned for Douglas Avenue this year as well. We're going to be taking a, a report to council on May 27th with the details.
It's all I needed to know, and I think it's, it's really good news because I think to Deputy Mayor Mackenzie's point, this corridor has with it a lot of opportunity for future business development. But it has to be localized, in a sense. There has to be economic opportunity, I think, there for business development along that corridor. But if it's a drive-through, and if it's a speeding zone, it's going to deter that and kill it. So if we're going to, if, if we have some of that interaction already, I think that's great news. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor. It's a wide street, too, so maybe some boulevards. Councillor Hickey?
Thanks, Your Worship. A similar question to Councillor Harris. I mean, I know our plan for Douglas Avenue is speed cushions. Now, I mean, while speed cushions do have positive impact, it's a pretty small piece of the puzzle when it comes to what traffic calming can be. I just hope we use this as a tremendous opportunity to take the, to take the chance to make sure that that section of Douglas Avenue and all of Douglas Avenue is, is user-friendly for the users we want it to be friendly for. I'd also highlight, you know, there's a tremendous connection in what should be the redesign of Main Street. But we continue to not have fair ball from DTI on redoing Main Street, which is a tremendous opportunity for this community, especially when we're getting told by DTI that this is where the museum has to go. So the city needs to do its part to make sure that the connection to the New Brunswick Museum is felt wholly by this community because we have such a tremendous opportunity with the quality of design in a building like that. But we're not getting necessarily all the pieces we need to be able to make that happen. And for me, that big missing piece is Main Street. And that's on DTI right now, because the city says we're in, and we're not getting it back. That's my frustration. This, let's go. I'm thrilled for three months out. There's going to be shovels in the ground.
Thank you, Councillor Ogden. Over to you.
Yeah, I was glad to hear the pause or response that they're getting from DTI because a lot of us who've been doing things in the city around DTI have found it's just a bureaucratic wall, talking to people in Fredericton. Talked to a guy that's hardly ever even been to St. John, even making decisions about St. John. Stanley Street Pedway, we've been trying to get just the rusted fence changed for 27 years. I just lived down the street from Reversing Falls. The, the rail hasn't been painted in two years. It's, it's gross. It's going to be leaving one of our major tourist attractions, Reversing Falls, to another one at the museum. And then Councillor Hickey talked about our frustration with Main Street. We had 10,000 people living in that area, that corridor from City Road to, we've lost those taxpayers. So when DTI are making decisions, they've got to start learning about having decisions about making urban decisions. For the longest time, New Brunswick was a rural province, and we're the only city that has a highway that runs through the middle. Doesn't happen in Moncton or Fredericton. And it seems at times that they're only worried about traffic, trucks and cars. But we're promoting in our city, a pedestrian city, which of the cities are growing. So when you have your conversations with DTI, you should really make it known that they're talking about urban politics and urban government because they don't seem to get it, the, those bureaucrats living in Fredericton of who we are. Reversing Falls Bridge has to be fixed up. Stanley Street Pedway has to be fixed up. We have to deal with the traffic problems on Douglas Avenue. I live there. I see dogs, cats, everything get hit all the time. And, and Main Street, we need DTI to hurry up. We've lost a lot of taxpayers because of that poor decision-making, what happened to Main Street. And now we're waiting and waiting and waiting. And DTI is a massive government bureaucracy based in Fredericton. But I don't know how aware they are about urban politics and urban traffic and pedestrian traffic. And so maybe you can help us with that in, in Fredericton. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I will say to the public, do not be afraid of Douglas Avenue. I mean, yes, there is probably some speeding over there. But there's, you know, it's, we've got an amazing museum that's going to be there. It will have a bit more traffic there. We are working with the province. That's our transportation department that will do and look after that work. We're not expecting you to solve all of our problems, but we would hope that we'll be able to use the museum as a bit of leverage to get more walkability is what we're after, and every community wants that. You know, we have been working with them, as some of the councillors talked about, Main Street. There's also another operation involved in that, which is called Gateway. It's a little more complicated than just DTI saying no. So we are trying to work with DTI as we move this whole, the whole city forward to more walkability. You know, as, I mean, that's, like I said, it's what everyone wants. It's active transportation. That's what we're looking for. And if you, I walk the Harbour Passage every day, and if, when I get to Bentley Street, I will be able to go up Bentley Street, and then hopefully I'll end up going along Douglas Avenue, and then I will come back down Chesley to, to the, to the other end. So we'll make a large sort of a triangle there. It'll come on the other end of Chesley Drive. So it's, and there has been, I've noticed a big difference in the speed on Chesley over the years. It is still four lanes of traffic. Is that necessary? I don't know, but that's a provincial road. But they have put signs up, you know, to lower the speed of the traffic along Chesley Drive. So, you know, we're trying to increase that, increase that walkability as we go forward. Councillor Redwin, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, that's, that's great. I totally agree. So after asking my question about housing, I think sometimes it is hard to sit in this role because there are some negative things that happen sometimes with a fantastic project. And so I don't want to just share any real negativity about this because the, the good unfortunately, like it fortunately does outweigh the bad. You know, you kind of think about jobs during construction phase, jobs after, being able to, you know, keep our, this beautiful architecture in our city. I was blown away by the, the drawings. It's very creative. It's beautiful. It just makes sense on the water. And then Councillor Harris, as you were kind of talking about it being like, you know, I, I was thinking about earlier, we were talking about the North End neighbourhood plan. And if we're getting the North End kind of revitalized, and Main Street's getting revitalized, there's a huge opportunity there for businesses along Main Street that would definitely be a way into Douglas Avenue. So there's huge opportunities here. Like the mayor mentioned, active transportation is one of the council's focuses. And I think as, you know, prices of rents are going up another 10%, for example, inflation's crazy. You know, I know I have staff members going on electric scooters. People are starting to use those modes of transportation more and more all the time with inflation. So it's extremely important for us to keep that in mind. And then when I think about housing New Brunswick's history, as I think it should, should be housed in St. John, it's very important. But then the tourism opportunities. I used to sit on the board of Discover St. John, and one of the big conversations always was, how do we keep people here longer? People were staying in hotels for one night. This is one of those projects that could keep people here numerous nights when there's events going on, and there's beautiful history to, to go and, and see in the museum. So thank you very much. I, I, I'm wondering if I should redo my vows because it's like the most beautiful place to go get married, right? And the rooftop, I mean, that was just absolutely brilliant to be able to really have the public be able to take in that exquisite view of the beautiful scenery in New Brunswick. It's just wonderful. So thank you for all of your efforts that you've put into this. Thank you.
Councillor Sullivan?
Thank you, Worship, and thank you to Councillor Redwin for bringing us back. For a while there, I forgot what we were going to be voting on here shortly. You know, whether it was, whether the museum is appropriate, and this development is appropriate in this space, or other things that we seem to be getting off on. This makes so much sense. And, and while it's unfortunate, should this move forward, that we lose a heritage property, not lost on these, the heritage property that we retain, and improve upon. I, I love the continual references to the old and the modern, the respect in both. I do disagree with Councillor Norton in that I've been to the Canadian Museum of History, and, you know, it's not going to be new, built in 2027, '28. And St. John, New Brunswick, that view you're going to have of the river on one side and the bay on the other, there is nowhere else in North America that will have that view. This is going to bring people to the city. As Councillor Redwin said, it's going to keep people in the city. It's going to be one more piece in the puzzle. It's going to make New Brunswick proud, but it's certainly going to continue to make St. John proud. So as soon as we can vote to keep this moving forward, I, I, let's get the shovel in the ground tomorrow if we can. So let, let's move it forward. Thanks.
Thanks. I'll go to the deputy next. It's your first time.
I'll echo everything Councillor Sullivan just said, and I'll move the recommendation, Your Worship.
Excellent. I'll take a second there then. Councillor Stewart. And over to Councillor Harris.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up question for maybe one of our planners or Commissioner Poffenrock. Do we have any sense that there is going to be a need for rezoning anything along this corridor to account for opportunities that may, the business community, let's say, may want to develop? Lot of residential along here. As far as I know, it's known as stable residential or heritage district. But there's areas around there like Fallsview, there's, you know, kind of an abandoned old convenience store down the street. I'm just curious if there's any thought around that.
Through you, Worship, to Councillor Harris. One of the benefits that we are doing our North End plan is this will be one of the, one of the corridors included in it. And the museum, as well as the new North End school, will be two new institutions that would be included. So that would be an opportunity as we're going through visioning for the plan is to identify if there is a broader vision beyond strictly residential for that corridor, and whether we want to move forward with different amendments to some of our zones to facilitate that. So I think it's definitely something that we can look at as part of the plan.
In the works. That's great. Thank you.
Okay, I have one quick question. Is, does anyone know if the audience on TV can see this?
My guess is no.
Is there an opportunity to move it, just a little bit at least, you know, before it gets? Oh, is that correct?
I guess the question would be for whoever's got control of the camera where we should move it.
Okay. We, I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure that the public could see it. I wasn't sure if it was coming up on the cam, on the TVs at all.
Yeah, right now, it's, uh, it's coming to just the edge of the podium, so it can't see below it.
Pull it back a few. Oh, it's on the slides. The, the model is, I mean, it's impressive to see. Okay, thank you, Councillor Hickey. Everybody's got it then. All right, so we have, I think that's it for you, Jennifer. I don't think, see any more questions. So we have a motion on the floor, and so I will call the question. Hang on. Oh, okay. We've got, where is my cheat sheet here? We're going to have, I guess, four motions will be required, and you're going to, you're going to do that. City Clerk, you go through the motions that we
Thank you. Yeah, so in this case, there are two different amendments that are required. The first one's for municipal plan, and it requires approval of first reading by title and then second reading by title.
Councillor Hickey and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw, and now second reading by title?
Second reading by title. Councillor Low and Councillor Sullivan on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw. And now we require two more motions for the zoning bylaw, so first reading by title and second reading by title.
First reading by title. Councillor Norton and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John, and now for second reading by title.
Second reading by title. Councillor Sullivan. Councillor Harris on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Okay, we're on our way. Now, I will just mention before we, I'm going to call, ask for a recess so that the, the model can be removed safely. But I just wanted to say that I've read the book by Margaret Pfizer. It's called The Geometry of Love. And she describes herself as an insatiable anthropologist of everyday life. And she likes to illuminate the spiritual and meanings of the, that's embedded in our architecture. And so she talks about the stairs, the big stairs, and she talks about how that's higher learning. It was always symbolized higher learning. So it's interesting. I mean, today we need accessibility. But there was a time when having an institution of higher learning required the big, I'm sure you know that, required the big stairs, you know, in the front of it to give it. And it had to be, you know, a predominant building built of very strong materials, et cetera. So it's, it's interesting to see the evolution of, of, of time and designs and what they mean to the public. So really appreciate you being here tonight. Appreciate you bringing the model along for us. And so thanks very much to everyone and your whole team. So I'll ask for a brief recess. If anybody would like to, Councillor Harris and Councillor Hickey, all in favor? Thank you. So just for a little recess, five minutes? Yes, please. Yes, very good. All right, what time is it? 27? 32. Well, we'll probably get them back by 35.
In addition to this application, staff are also recommending that to incorporate clarifying language into the Douglas Avenue Heritage Conservation Area section of the bylaw to address the longstanding encroachment in the non-designated New Brunswick Museum structure into the Heritage Conservation Area. I don't have, I apologize, I don't have any fancy renders to showcase, but I have some interesting information. So Douglas Avenue is located in the north end of the city, and it used to connect the towns of Portland and Lancaster before the Amogomation in 1889. The prime characteristic of Douglas Avenue is the mixture of working-class tenements with the more substantial homes of the wealthy classes. The Douglas Avenue Heritage Conservation Area, which you see on the screen, was designated by common council in 1992. The procedure for defining the boundaries and properties included in the conservation area differed from the procedures undertaken from other areas in which the property owners were given the option of declining to have their property included in the proposed Heritage Conservation Areas. That approach caused examples of buildings of historical, cultural, or architectural significance to not be designated, while buildings of unknown history or little architectural significance to be considered for designation. The property at 241 Douglas Avenue is a two-story wood vernacular Italianate residence constructed circa 1881. A statement of significance for the property could not be found by staff, and very little information about the building could be found in general. But the property contains identifiable character-defining elements of the Italianate style, such as the corbels along the roofline, entrance tower, and the low-peached roof. 241 Douglas Avenue was described in the Douglas Avenue Heritage Management Plan Study, which was conducted by architect Michael R. Richard in 1991, as a good example of both quality of design and craftsmanship, and a good example of the vernacular Italianate style. It's a middle building of a block cluster and not a landmark. So in terms of the encroachment correction, when established in this Heritage Conservation Area, the intent was to include the entire land comprising of the park, and by doing so, it unintentionally included a small portion of the museum structure that encroached onto the park, which is displayed on the image on the right. The adjustment in the written description of the Douglas Avenue Heritage Conservation Areas seeks to exclude a portion of the lot that is corresponding with the standing museum building from the Riverview Memorial Park lot, which will better reflect the original intentions with the lot and how it's been used historically. As per the removal of the heritage designation request, in the letter submitted by the applicant, three main key points can be understood as rationales for de-designation. The first, the first point consists of its location within a non-contiguous Heritage Conservation Area. The property sits at the end of a cluster of designated properties. The next designated property of that side of Douglas Avenue can only be found eight lots later, resulting in a 139-meter gap between the last designated property, which is 241 Douglas Avenue, and the next, which will be Riverview Memorial Park, and that is the gap that's represented on that image. Where a designated building stands in reference to other designated buildings may just be a consequence of how the designation took place in that area, and not necessarily a reflection of its heritage value. That is especially true in the Douglas Avenue Heritage Conservation Area. However, the applicant has confirmed on public hearings of their commitment in designating the portion of the original building, which includes the King George VI Hall, and the prospect of designation of the building of the New Brunswick Museum Building, the original, sorry, the original New Brunswick Museum Building, will contribute to the heritage area by including a historically significant building to the list of designated properties, and in helping to attenuate some of the conservation area's gap-toothed appearance. For reference, the last request for designation of a building on Douglas Avenue took place in 2006 for the 270 Douglas Avenue property. The second point utilized by the applicant for de-designation relies on the premise that the residence at 241 Douglas Avenue is not a good example of a ubiquitous style. To determine heritage value, conservation practitioners operate on what is referred to as value-based context, using values attributed through several criteria. For this evaluation, we utilize guidelines present on the Evaluation of Historic Buildings publication, which was prepared by Parks Canada in the 1980s, to help professionals determine significance of buildings in their community. So both properties then should be evaluated based on their style, construction, age, architect, and craftsmanship. As I mentioned, the residence at 241 Douglas Avenue is a good example of vernacular Italianate architecture. Buildings of the Italianate style are commonly found in other instances throughout the city, particularly in the post-fire period in St. John, and some of them can be much grander in scale and detailing. No information that would support the building's historical importance or connections to important historical figures and architects could be found by staff, so its heritage importance then can be attributed to the representation of the vernacular Italianate style on Douglas Avenue. The New Brunswick Museum Building is a landmark building, built in a boulevard architectural style, which is more commonly found in larger centers, and a rare example of that style in the Maritimes. It is a lineal descendant of the 1842 Guinness Museum, officially the first designated museum in Canada. Only a few examples of that same style can be found in St. John, which include the Carnegie Building and the Old Pope's Office Building on Princess William. The museum building at 277 Douglas Avenue was designed by Harry Clare Mott, which is, who is the son of the also prominent architect Harry Age Mott, and officially opened to the public on August 16, 1934, and included the presence of the then Prime Minister RB Bennett. The museum's heritage value, however, surpasses the rarity of its architectural style, its historical value as a location of the New Brunswick Museum, as well as its cultural and social significance as the holder of documented information of various phases of the countries, in the country's progress since before the French settlement to the region, as well as collections of cultural importance that are invaluable, of invaluable significance with the, with position, the New Brunswick Museum Building as an important asset to the whole province. The Douglas Avenue Heritage Management Plan Study, which I mentioned before in this presentation, evaluated the property as a higher, higher priority candidate for designation over the property at 241 Douglas Avenue. When analyzed by history, architecture, and contribution to streetscape, the museum received an A grade, while 241 Douglas received a C grade, where A represents a high priority of designation by the author's methodology. This will provide a direct acknowledgement of the higher importance of the structure over the residence for designation, and provides a rationale for supporting the removal of the property at 241 Douglas Avenue in exchange for the preservation and designation of the museum structure. The third and last argument by the applicant relates to the better public benefit of the preservation and expansion of the museum of the residence at 241 Douglas Avenue. While we recognize the unfairness of comparing a broader public benefit of a prominent cultural use facility to a private residence, it is important to understand the inherent public value in conserving our heritage architecture, especially when there are cultural and historic components that add to the social benefits provided by the conservation of historic places. Conservation of historic places as a public benefit has been recognized by the municipal plan, by NSJ, which acknowledges the important role of our built heritage plays in establishing community's sense of place and identity, and a key attribute that is responsible for the attraction of thousands of visitors, annual residents every year, and separates St. John from other cities in the province. As highlighted by the previous presentations, the expansion, reopening, and designation of museum provide the protection of a historically, architecturally, and culturally significant building, in addition to a plethora of public benefits. The intent of the bylaw and through it, the standards and guidelines prevent staff from making any positive recommendations for the demolition of a designated heritage building that would compromise the integrity of a Heritage Conservation Areas. So this is not a simple application, and the loss of any historic building, whether designated or not, cannot and should not be taken lightly, especially buildings with residential potential. But as a result of the evaluation of both buildings, the designation of the New Brunswick Museum Building indicates a contribution in a broader manner to the community. The return of the New Brunswick Museum to its historic setting with the expansions proposed and future designation involved the rehabilitation and protection of the original historic building, which would represent a public benefit in and of itself, but also an enormous contribution to Douglas Avenue Heritage Conservation Area, the community, and the city as an educational, touristic, and cultural resource. It is important to point out, though, that a request like this to remove a property designation for the development of a public benefit, fully financed by the applicant, is very unique due to the relative value of a heritage property unlikely to be repeated. Considering that the evaluation of both buildings, the applicant's recognition of the importance of the Heritage Conservation Program. the importance of the heritage conservation program providing protection to this rare example of Beaux-Arts architecture in the city, and historical, historical home of the New Brunswick Museum, as well as the positive contribution to Douglas Avenue Heritage Conservation Area boundaries, has convinced staff to make a positive recommendation. The Heritage Development Board, on meeting held on April 3, has accepted staff's recommendation and approved removal of the building from the Douglas Avenue Conservation Area. Staff recommends, then, that Common Council give first and second reading to the amendment to the Heritage Conservation Areas bylaw, which removes the property situated at 241 Douglas Avenue from the Douglas Avenue Heritage Conservation Area, and to incorporate clarifying language associated with the encroachment into the Douglas Avenue Heritage Conservation Area. Thank you.
Thank you, Rodrigo. So I will open the public hearing now. Yeah, you can have a seat, and then I'll open the public hearing right now, and I'll find out if there's anyone here who would like to speak against this application. I'll ask again if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the application. And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak against the application. City Clerk, we didn't have anyone registered.
No, we did not.
Thank you. So I'll ask if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application. I'll get you to give us your name and your relationship to the application.
Hi, good evening here, worship members of council. My name's Melissa Wakefield. I'm with EXP Architects, and we are the associate architectural engineering firm on the project locally.
Okay. Your, yours.
Thank you. I think firstly, thank you to staff for the, for the thorough recap of the application. I think it speaks very deeply to the challenges and the, you know, double-edged sword, so to speak, that comes with the application. We certainly do hope, however, that in recognizing that this project is in the hands of an established conservation group like the New Brunswick Museum, that, you know, the heritage recordings that will be done of, of the property in question, as well as the promise to designate the existing 1930s structure, will more than make up for the loss of what is no doubt a beautiful house, but when we consider the broader context and the value of the museum to the community and to the province, we, we feel that there is no other way forward but to request its, its removal from designation. It's a very strategic property for the broader development, and it's the path that we ultimately find ourselves in, but do know that the museum staff are taking the utmost care and making sure that its, its design and heritage value is, is recorded for history's sake.
Thank you, Melissa. I do have a question from Counselor Ogden. I was happy to read in the kit about the record, the heritage recordings. I thought that's a good idea. I like that. So Counselor, did you have a question about this for the, for Melissa Wakefield about the application?
Yeah, I was just wondering, Melissa, I live almost across the street and getting a lot of calls, but out of all the buildings, it's the smallest one.
That's right.
I'm ignorant on this, but could it have been moved, the building itself?
I was not involved with the discussions surrounding that specifically, but it's my understanding that evaluation on the building was undertaken to understand the possibility of its relocation, and that there were some challenges due to road width, loading limitations for the road, as well as the structural integrity of the house that would be necessary to successfully relocate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other questions for you. Thank you for being here this evening.
All right, thank you.
So I'll ask again for the second time if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application. And I'll ask for the third time if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the application. Counselor Norton, good. I know, I don't see anything from Counselor Norton, we're good. So I will officially close the public hearing, and I'll ask the team if you have any questions for staff. Counselor Hickey?
Excellent.
Excellent, thank you. Take a second, or Counselor Lowe? Okay, City Clerk, I don't see any questions, so over to you for the, for the motions.
Thank you, just two motions required for this one. Approve first reading by title and approve second reading by title.
I'll take a motion to approve first reading by title. Counselor Hickey and the deputy on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Allow to amend the St. John Heritage Conservation Areas bylaw.
Okay, in a second, I'll take a motion to approve second reading by title. Counselor Sullivan and Counselor, Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Allow to amend the St. John Heritage Conservation Areas bylaw.
Excellent. Next item, City Clerk?
Next is item 12.2, and this is a staff report with respect to repair of unsightly conditions at 80 Main Street.
Okay. I'm sending this one over to the Commissioner of Growth as well. Ms. Povenrath, over to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening here, worship and members of council. Before you this evening is a recommendation to proceed with remediation of unsightly conditions at 80 Main Street, a building monitored under the city's Dangerous and Vacant Building Program. This recommendation comes from action under the Unsightly Repair Program, which launched in 2023, providing an enforcement tool for vacant buildings with non-hazardous unsightly conditions. Under the program, owners are required to address unsightly conditions resulting in time and money being invested in vacant buildings that may otherwise be neglected. The goal is to expedite owner action, potentially prompting, hopefully, a full repair or a sale, while allowing city staff to address conditions that detract from community pride. In spring 2023, three notices to comply were issued under this program, including the file before you. Owner compliance is ongoing at the remaining two properties, and they are expected to fully comply without any need for city action. Although there will be cases where city repair does become necessary, the program has demonstrated success in generating action from owners to achieve voluntary compliance. As an additional update, two unsightly repair notices have been issued thus far in 2024, and repairs by the owners have already commenced on one. And with that introduction, before you now is Ben Pierinton, the manager of the Dangerous and Vacant Building Program, who will provide a brief overview on this specific file. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Povenrath. Good evening here, worship and members of Common Council. Today I'll be providing a brief overview of the Unsightly Repair Program filed before you, item 12.2 of the agenda. The building at 80 Main Street is a vacant, single-family home located in the city's north end. In April of 2023, a notice to comply was issued on the property requiring repair of unsightly conditions present on the building, cleanup of the premises, and demolition of an accessory building. The conditions identified in the notice included peeling and missing paint, a dilapidated chimney, broken windows, and a structurally unsound garage at the rear of the property, among other items. After receiving the notice, the owner made efforts to address the outstanding items. The garage at the rear of the property was demolished, the dilapidated chimney was removed, broken windows were repaired, and a section of siding was repaired. This work took place in July and August of 2023, although no further action has been taken to comply with the notice since that time. The conditions still outstanding include peeling and missing paint present on the building, and unsightly debris present on the property. The staff is recommending that Common Council authorize city repair and cleanup to address the remaining unsightly conditions at 80 Main Street. Any costs associated with these repairs will be billed to the owner and later reimbursed by the province if left unpaid. The following exterior photos of the unsightly conditions can be found on pages 319 to 328 of the council packet. So this is the front facade of the building. And the right side. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
All right, we do have a couple of questions. So the recommendation is that Common Council direct one or more of the officers appointed and designated by council for the enforcement of the St. John unsightly premises, dangerous buildings, and structures bylaws to clean up the premises, repair the unsightly dilapidated conditions on the building at 80 Main Street. Counselor Ogden, you have any questions on this recommendation?
Yes. Ben, I've had a lot of phone calls. I just, I don't live too far from it, and people are always calling about people, travelers in the area and such. And every time I go there, everybody tells me there's nobody that has lived there in a long, long time. It's like a ghost house, yet it's, it's maintained, not maintained, but the owners keep saying that we want to own it, but there's been nobody living there for a long time. And I don't understand, I think maybe a deeper search has to go into this in the sense that we don't, I think this is a Queen Anne, which is a Victorian-style home, is it not? No, it's Queen Anne. Anyway.
Well, it doesn't matter what that is. Are we going to send somebody to clean it up or fix it up or not?
Yeah, but, but the thing is that there's something else going on here, that you have a home that's empty, the owners in Toronto want to hang on to it, and we're going to lose a gem of our history. So, you know, we can say clean it up, and they'll do that, probably, or, or not, but the thing is, there's something else going on here, like that house is always empty, and the people living around it are wondering about, you know, people coming and going and vandalism and such.
I don't know if you have an answer for that.
Through your worship to the counselor, I, I will just say that, you know, the intent of the program is to give us enforcement tools for non-hazardous vacant buildings so that we can try to generate owner action. It's been successful in some of the properties that we've issued, seen compliance on two of the three that we issued last year.
I just wonder what the real purpose of that house is.
And another, another thing I will note, one thing that came as a result of this notice, there was a dilapidated chimney on the building that was causing water ingress into the, into the property. That was addressed by the owner as a result of the notice, and, and stopped the water ingress, which will allow the property to be maintained for some additional time until they get their plans together for the property.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Harris?
Just wanted to say thank you to you, Ben, and to the team. Very, very proud of this program to see it come and to develop the way it has, you know, focusing in on that little isolated section of the Local Governance Act to make it work for us. There, you know, to Counselor Ogden's point, this is a part of a bigger problem that our city is really in a crosshairs on, and we've talked about it many times, that no one else is on. Some people just hold property in St. John just so they can keep their permanent residency status. There's all, you know, their visa statuses, they don't ever come here and live here. There's lots of people that just don't even, don't pay their taxes, and this is a way for us to safeguard this asset. It's really good news about that water around the chimney. I was over there last year looking at it and just thinking, my God, we could house, I don't know how many people on that spot with a, with a decent rehab, should it become available to do so? And so as we pile this kind of notice after notice up, and we do this kind of work, it's just another way for us to, you know, push these folks to do something or to make it available to the community to do something with. So thank you for your work. Looking forward to see, do we have any estimate on when work will be done? I suppose we haven't even issued tender yet for this.
No, we haven't at this time, so we'll be required to do some, I guess, obtain quotes to purchasing, and then, and then proceed after that.
And I do have a question, and this, this may actually go to someone else, Ben, beside yourself, worship. If we, the, the scope of this work would be under a fairly, would be under, you know, a quarter of a million-dollar threshold for repair work, does that mean we're able to include a broader scope of builders that don't have to meet those same criteria? I know that we have a free trade, you know, kind of imposition here, there's New Brunswick legislation around procurement. I don't know who to address the question to, but it occurs to me that if, if we are going to be able to include a broader scope of companies, that will get done faster, that's all.
Through your worship, we're working with purchasing, actively working with our purchasing department, and they have some ongoing initiatives, and we're trying to incorporate that into these repairs.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Counselor Hickey, over to you.
Thanks very much, your worship, through you to Ben. Any understanding of how many of similar properties like this we have, you have identified?
Through your worship, just to clarify, like, ones that we would potentially issue a notice like this on?
Yeah.
So the goal this year is to issue 10 of these kinds of notices, so we'll be, we'll be able to issue those and then continue on in the future. I will say, like, through this year, as we've been issuing the notices, we have been noticing that people have been taking action, and even in advance of us issuing the notice, so that's been, to a degree, a bit of a challenge. We've had trouble finding good properties to issue notice on, but I feel we're going to hit the 10 this year, and we'll have some more in the future as well.
So you think the, the capacity's 10, but also the, the requirement is 10, too? Like, do you have a big, do you have a big identified list, or is it just 10?
We think the capacity's 10. I don't think there's much more capacity outside of that per year.
No, I understand the capacity for you guys. I mean, what's out there that needs to be done? How many, how many is that?
That's what I mean as well. About 10 per year would be really reasonable capacity of buildings that we would actually have available to do this on, so.
Good, and I hope if we identify, like, I'm tremendously excited about this project. I hope a bunch of other people are tremendously excited about this project, so I hope if that, if that supply of buildings like this does increase, that we can increase our capacity to make sure we're meeting it, because it's way better to see these come to council than teardowns come to council. This is really exciting. Thanks.
Oh, maybe. It seems, it sounds like a phone's ringing somewhere, but I don't know what that is. Counselor Lowe, over to you.
Do you know when these people bought it?
Through your worship to the counselor, it's been with the current owners since 2017. I'm not sure the month, but.
Do you know why they bought it? Did they, did you directly talk to this, these people?
We have been in contact. My understanding is that they purchased it, and they intend to retire at this location, but they don't have any definitive timelines as to when that might take place.
Because, no doubt, this is one of the reasons why so many houses were bought in the city and had just let, neglected, simple as that. This is a good policy.
Ben, would you just give us like a little bit of a highlight? I know the building one has to be vacant, so what would be some of the triggers of those 10 for you?
Through your worship to the counselor, so, or to your worship, the, so some of the triggers for us would be, again, those, I thought, those unsightly conditions, unsightly dilapidated conditions are present, there's some specific legislation that we have to work within, so they have to be unsightly by reason of being dilapidated, so that's one of the factors. Another would be, I guess, our, where are we at with trying to work towards compliance and getting the buildings repaired and reoccupied with the owner? So I mentioned about the, the trying to find the 10, some of the properties that we were identifying potentially earlier in the year, we've actually had good progress on, on that front, so they may not become some of the ones that we issued throughout the year. And, and really, those are really the two main factors that we're considering when we're, when we're issuing these notices. Another thing, right now, we're focusing on, I guess, key areas of the city, so Old North End, North End as a whole, South Central Peninsula, and Lower West Side, so focusing in those areas right now, and could expand to a further area if, if needed.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I think that's it for you for questions, appreciate it. So I'll take a motion. Oh, wait, hang on a second, I'll get the clerk to describe them. No, that's.
Oh, this would just be the motion that's in the report.
Never mind, it's in the report. So there's a motion in the report. Take a mover and a second, or Counselor Hickey and Counselor Redwin on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, City Clerk?
Next is a letter, it's item 15.1, and it's a letter from E. Gittens on 1671 Sandy Point Road. Recommendation is to refer this to the Growth Committee.
Refer to Growth Committee? Deputy? I'll, hang on. I'll take a second on that, and then I'm going to go to Counselor Harris for a question. I'll take a second on that, and then I'm going to go to Counselor Harris for a question. Counselor Redwin, Counselor Harris, over to you for your question.
To be honest, I don't know why we're sending this to Growth Committee. There's a lot of notices, emails and stuff coming in on this front, doesn't really present any new information for Growth Committee to consider. We've already referred, I think, one letter to Growth Committee. Wouldn't it be more appropriate just to receive this for information? But I can stand corrected, so.
Yeah, no, and I guess it's, okay, I'll send that to the deputy. Deputy?
Okay, thank you. Counselor Harris's comment, I think what we're trying to do here is we're going to have the Friends of Rockford Park come in and do a presentation to Growth on this, and I'd like to have a full package, okay, everything in one spot for that presentation, and it would be a two-way dialogue before anything happens and goes to council. Thank you, worship.
Thank you. Okay, so we've got the motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, so I'll take the vote on the question. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. All right, over to you, Mr. Lowe, Counselor Lowe. Thank you. Take a second on that. Counselor Stewart, thank you. Thanks, everyone, thanks, staff. Great meeting tonight. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien, for being here.